Really good to decide each year how much of the budget we could allocate on this project.
Okay, and if I'm not incorrect, our total budget's $170 million.
A little bit more than that, isn't it?
Without the debt.
Without the interest?
Without it.
About 156, right there.
Alright, so this is what, one something percent? Okay. I've got to ask this basic question, how can we not proceed with this? Just to be moving forward in the world and be competitive with every other district? And, you know, that's theoretical, I'm not going to even answer that. I think that, you know, when we talk about this, sometimes I feel like we're reinventing a wheel. You know, there's only, what, 800 districts in the state of Illinois and every one of them's covering the same thing. So sometimes I feel like we're, you know, just approaching this from start ground zero, you made reference to 214 and so on and so. I thought, I think that we can gain a lot of insight, you know, whether we have one device or multiple devices. You know, my thought is that, you know, we prepare the world for multiple things. Because a year from now, maybe an iPad or maybe a Chromebook isn't going to be the answer anymore. So, you know, I really like the idea of that flexibility. And I think we have to move forward with it. And again, you know, professional development, you know, in my business, if I had to fund every cost of professional development and learning new things, I'd still be using an advocate. And, you know, I think there's a point where we've got to expect our professional staff to step up to some of this. I mean, again, we need to give them guidance, but I mean, you know, if we have to spend $5 million a year, $2 million, whatever that number is, in constant training, there's some, I hope, that occurs outside of that paid environment. And I think we try, you know, I get this feeling when we talk about it, there's the only time that I'm going to ever learn is when I open the book and I'm on the meter. And I don't think that's true. I think, I expect our professional staff to really step up. And I would expect that to be, you know, something that, you know, again, I don't want to overemphasize that professional development as though that's not going to happen and so on and so.
Right. With the professional development, it's not, you know, that we're paying people to figure out the device. The teachers will work on that and do that incredibly on their own. I could call kindergarten teachers and they'd probably be here on Saturday morning and bring treats. No, a lot of professional development does it.
Well, they would, yes.
But a lot of the time that we're talking about is for teams to work together on how do we systematically do some of these changes in instruction, so it's not just individualized. And that we learn from, well, how did this work in your classroom and how did this device work in your classroom? So when they're not reinventing the wheel, so that they can learn from each other. In a lot of professions, there is an opportunity over lunch or in between clients to share. In education world, you have 42 minutes and you're there with the students, you have four minutes, and then the next group of students come in, there isn't a whole lot of collaboration time that is built into the day to have that training happen. So sometimes it's just building that time where when they've already done a lot of their own learning, to have it share and become part of a system for that. It isn't, here we'd like you to go read and learn about this and we'll pay you to do that. A lot of it is collaboration and teamwork, that just in other professions, that happens and there's just not that time in the day with education. Yes, to be bringing some consultants sometimes, but if you think about how many meetings other professions have where they're talking about how to make their craft better, we have three institute days and before time and after school time for teachers to do that. And our staff does spend an inordinate amount of hours. They were coming in on their own time for a week of learning all this week. A lot of what was on technology, they'd asked me to videotape them so that they can, they weren't able to get the two sessions that they wanted at the exact same time, so can I videotape it and they can watch it on their own. Working a lot with the technology department and we cook to have onsite videos and resources for them to go to on their own time, so that it's not costing us anything to do that. We're videotaping classrooms in our own district and then sharing those videotapes that teachers are watching on their own time to be able to get better at their craft. So you bring up a good point, but they are doing a lot of their own learning, some of it is so that we can work better as a system and not have each teacher of each department recreate the wheel on their own.
One last question. The topic we are discussing is technology device update. When do we go, how do we go to technology device program? In other words, when do we start making this happen? What is the plan on that?
We need to find some monies to be able to do that. Definitely the plan that I just talked about gets us to what is the best type of device, then we're going to need to purchase those devices for those classrooms. And we do need allocations of money. We have some of it that is coming in because of a leasing that will be off the charts, but we're still going to need to look at our budget and redefine and prioritize that need. It's a less of a ticket item, they're going one-to-one, but it still will be something that we need to fill in.
What year are we speaking on?
Well, there are monies, whoops, I'm not on. There are monies for this year's budget that you've seen we've reallocated to get to this. And then we need to look at the type of devices, which departments were ready to do what, and then build that into next year's budget. This will do the groundwork to do that. And I think we'll probably come back with, here's the, here's what we'd really like to do, what's room for the budget, and here's less of an option of what we want to do, and we'll have to be fiscally responsible and make that decision.
Which budget year are we speaking around, Prof.
For the 15, 16 budget. I think it'll be an ongoing process, though this is step one, and now what are we ready to do for step two? I would like to see us have a three to five-year plan after we've gone through, but we need to be fiscally responsible too.
And educationally responsible, I hope you say that.
Well, that is my hat, yes, right.
Who goes first? Mr. G M V.
So, just to make sure I understand, the way you're going to fund this, first of all, 2014, 15 budget will have, this option two plan will not be implemented in 2014, 2015?
The beginnings of it will, because we're going to allocate staff members' devices at 20 to 30 percent of staff at each high school level. They're going to choose their devices, they're getting back to us on August 19 by which groups, and by August, no, September, oh, third or fourth of which device, so that they will be in the hands of staff members who can do this. And then we've already set up trainings that we will provide if they don't, if the principals and the staff do not feel like they're comfortable at providing this training at the staff level, so we'll do that, and then those trainers will train other staff members there. And then they have to be able to show how it changed instruction. And then we will already have money available to do a second wave of this or to start purchasing devices, but it's within the budget that is already going to be approved, it is an additional monies.
So, sorry. That's alright. So, what did we cut out or what fell off the table to accomplish this? Because obviously, those monies are, they were allocated for some other purpose, what purpose in IT or whatever area has been affected now?
Right. We had planned when we originally put the budget together to buy a device for every single staff member to use at middle school and high school level. Systematically, there's problems with that in providing professional development. Which device do we choose? What are the expectations for professional development? So, we're backing that off, and each school is only going to have 20 to 30 percent of their staff getting a device of which to share. So that's where the reallocation of dollars and why it's less. And then we can use the money that's left from that, as opposed to 100 percent, to only having, you know, 20 to 30 percent at each building, to then have a second wave to get more devices for staff and instruction, or to start using that money this year during the second half of the year for student devices in classrooms.
Rod, we keep speaking about this $300,000 of leases falling off and dropping off, is that next fiscal year or is that activity going to start happening this year?
Whatever we do to plan for next year will be, you'll see it again like we normally do in April and May. That's when we plan so we can have the devices here in the summer. But the initial first approved leases for the elementary fall off this June, we have to decide what to do with those 1,200 PCs.
And a couple things. On the one-to-one item, you spoke about 176 access points, which is obviously a huge investment. You also spoke about, at least I read this to say that you were going to add more technology to people. In option two, you chatted about 20 access points. How was that, how does option two affect your staff versus option one affecting your staff on head counts, I guess FTEs?
That's really kind of indicative of whatever we come up with as the X amount. If we remember when I was doing the one-to-one, it was we wanted tech staff for every 500 new devices. Right now, we're talking about adding, I don't even remember what the devices is, it's less than 90 devices. But it would be once those levels hits 500, so again, if in year one, let's say we could find $500,000 to apply for devices, we'd probably have to add a portion of that for a tech staff person. If year one was only, we only had $250,000 for devices, I could probably skate by with what I have now. Again, as we start to talk about this instruction, the teachers are going to take the ownership of these devices and become specialists on these devices. They actually manage the apps on them and all of that, it actually does free us up. Now, if it dropped on the ground and cracked and broken, we'll need to, of course, fix it, but it's not, it's not controlled or maintained like we maintain laptops. These devices are, you know, very personalized and doesn't require a lot of our staff on them. But I would say the number's around 500 where we want to make sure we have a body otherwise. And really, that was more specific to the one-to-one, because of how many students will be taking them back and forth and how they'd be damaged. I think it's a little different when we say, again, there's 10 extra devices, you know, five iPads and five Chromebooks or whatever in a teacher's classroom, those 10 are going to last a lot longer than 10 things going home and back and forth with a kid every day, so.
I know that on the one-to-one scenario, you ran it out, started at 15, 16, and ran it out ongoing. And I know that option two allows more flexibility and is going to be much more dynamic based on needs and budgets, but is the plan to at least try to have some layout of a plan for the next five years on, assuming we move forward with the option two scenario? Because again, I realize it's fluid, but we have to have a plan.
Right. I would like to have a, here's at the high end of the next three years and here's at the low end and different options of, because this isn't as big of chunks, you can say, alright, we'd like to do this for the high school math departments, we'd like to do this for the middle school science departments, we'd like to do, and here's all the price ranges of what that would be, what can we afford for next year and prioritize what that would be. Eventually getting us to having classroom devices. And it doesn't necessarily need to be a device for every single student within a classroom, there's a lot of collaboration in things that can happen of what that would be. And we do, to your point, need to start saying, okay, what else do we need to give up or try to cut to be able to do some of these things with technology? But we really need to know and have an idea of what are the types of devices and what can we do with this new technology to improve instruction first.
So it sounds to me that we're really kind of in the investigation stage. So this year is sort of like a pilot or a test run. And so to me, I mean, I can, I would like to see a five-year plan as well, but I think this year could be then the good basis for developing the plan, because you'll see, you know, will it catch on, how the teachers will respond, you'll just gather a lot of information once this year goes through and then be able to come to us, you know, with something maybe a little bit more firm. And I like the high, medium, low scenarios as well. I think that at least gives us the ability to understand better and to maybe pick and choose. And it gives us the ability to understand the priorities of the staff as well, so. Any other comments about the report or questions? Yeah, Channing and I, guys, we have two discussion items after this, so.
Just real quick, we have a technology committee. What are you doing?
Teachers and administrators.
I guess it almost be more like, there's a purchasing power or like, schools get discounts through Apple or whatever.
We get everything, right?
That's for internet access, not for purchasing devices. And Apple's kind of stinky, they only give you $50 a device, it's non-negotiable.
And everybody else, all the other ones are, like, is there, I just always feel like the region should be, you know, doing more to step up, because we're all doing the same thing with all these topics we talk about. And if they could just say, I have the billion in all these school districts, I mean, you're in Illinois or something frustrating, because do we need to go to our local? I think we could get a lot more buy-in from our business people or even parents when it's a specific thing, it's not just Foundation 200, you know, general funds, whatever, but to say.
Is that what you were going to say?
No, it's okay. I'm going to support you.
Oh, okay. But yeah, to put a definite name on something, and everybody loves technology, so, I don't know, we need to not just be fundraisers, but we, I don't know, take it from there.
I don't have any questions, these two comments go in a different direction. New 200 needs a big idea that they can sink their teeth into, so I like that. I'm ready to make a statement saying right now, saying this is a good idea. I think targeting modernizing classrooms can be a lot more achievable with, it's linked to something, not just saying we modernize 20 class, 20 schools with the classrooms. So, I love the idea. That's my comment.
I'm fully supportive. I'd like to call this a pilot program that we're running to this year versus a investigative. I think we're beyond investigative, I think we've heard a lot of this, so I think we are really moving forward into a pilot, so we're going to have a buzzword, I prefer that.
Okay. I was trying to avoid pilot because it is so overused, but I agree with you, I think we're beyond investigative.
This just could be step one.
Yeah, there you go.
And along with that, well, actually along with what you're saying, I think, you know, as much as we can let parents, PTAs and such know, because they're going to continue buying devices, parents buy devices for their kids, so, you know, no reason they shouldn't be buying things that are compatible with the potential of where we're going. Secondly, if we can come up with a name beyond option two, that would be great, so.
A new name. Have you got one, Rod?
No.
I was going to go with a new name.
You're too slow. We do work with the PTAs, everything they purchase now they come through us, they work with us and our vendors, that helps them get a discount, it also allows us to make sure we point them in the, we have a purchasing page that says, only buy these, there's a big red X by the things we don't want them to buy because we have a hard time working with everybody.
And one of the things that I, let's get through my phone, okay, now. One of the things that I think we can benefit from, and I know I would like to see, is, you know, the first few of these that either are success stories or even failures. I think, I would like to see a presentation on that, so that that would encourage, I think, other teachers to want to investigate. And I think it will give us and give the public some information about how technology is changing instruction, because it's not evident, I think, to a lot of people that technology will and should change instruction. So I think if we can, you know, schedule something like that, as soon as we have a couple of projects, either succeed or fail, it would be nice to hear and have some good publicity on that.
There are tentative plans by November to have a lot of the high school staff that are involved in this process be ready to share their presentations.
That ends the oral report section of our agenda. We have two discussion items. The first is the 2014, 2015 budget. Mr. Farley, you'll give us that update. And could I just please, have we kind of beat the insurance question to death here? Because otherwise, we're looking at getting out of here maybe at a quarter to 12. So if we can just sort of go through the rest and if there are any more questions on that, we'll leave those to the end of the discussion on budget. But let's kind of move through this and get other questions answered if we can.
Thank you, Mrs. Intardy. It's actually going to be a combination presentation, myself and Mrs. Dolph, was probably the only technical business guy in the curriculum person, it's kind of like a cow and a chicken walking to a barn.
I don't want to know what they're calling it. Which one eats right off?
Anyway, this presentation is born out of a discussion that the finance committee had after, you know, after the budget was posted back on July 9th. We asked the board to provide questions, which we received a number of them, and the finance committee with Mr. Matheson, Mrs. Swanson, myself, and Mrs. Dolph was met to go over those budget questions, also discuss the current budget, and then put together, that was kind of the genesis of this presentation that we're going to go through today. And it's a little bit of a, we're going to do a quick look back on last year, we're going to also do, look at some historical data, because I do believe historical data is important, especially when you're looking at how the district chooses to spend its money and where that money's being spent, obviously on some of our larger line items, so we're going to talk about that. But first, I'm going to start, and I should, I'll preface, this is, alright, Rod Lee's in the background.
Josh Purdy.
You want to get the right device?
Hard to get a turn. You can't leave.
Anyway, I'm going to preface the first slide, this is our look back at the 13, 14 year we just finished up. The board does have the actuals tonight, that was something we get to at this August meeting. I'll preface that the actuals you have are cash actuals, which are different. One of the items we wanted to look at as part of this presentation was the accrual. We do have our auditors in right now, they're working on the audit, so. So we did ask, and this is a draft, this isn't final yet, they're still working on it, but this is just an indication of how we ended up. For the operating funds of the district, this is what, you know, when we file our AFR and file with the state document as far as our financial profile where we ended up. In total, I'll speak to the total, we're a million two negative this year, we're ending up, this first time in four years that we've actually gone negative. And I will say a large part of it is the impact of, you know, healthcare and tuition costs also went up as well, and those are two items that are somewhat out of our control. O and M fund, you know, we, you know, the winter we had, had an impact on that fund as well. But again, this is the draft numbers, it may change a little bit. And obviously, this is on accrual basis, it'll look different from what you see in your cash basis, which is just what we received in cash and what we expended from July 1st through June 30 of the fiscal year. So, a little bit under 1 percent off of what our overall spend was for the year. So looking back, you know, one of the main drivers of our revenue stream is the Consumer Price Index, which is used for generating our taxes, the taxes that we receive each year. And that CPI average over the last five years, including the CPI for the budget that's going to impact this budget, has been about 10 percent. And what we want to talk, what we want to illustrate here for the board is really where we're spending the money, that, you know, in some areas, we're not hitting that 2 percent mark, in some areas, we're going over that 2 percent mark. So we use that 2 percent average going over. So we're starting, we're starting with salaries, which is the largest area. And basically, if you go back five years and look at where our administrative salaries were and draw that 2 percent line going forward, you can see where our actual spend is over four years and then where our budget is for the 14, 15 school year. Similarly, with our teacher salaries, you can see where we started back in 2010, 11, and drawing that 2 percent line out over the next five years up to the current budget year, you can see that we're, again, underneath that 2 percent marker as far as the overall spend goes for the teacher salaries. And then if you look at all salaries, and you got, these are all in the education fund of the school district, which is the largest fund, you can see that our overall spend for over the five years in salaries was under that 2 percent average over that time period. Health insurance, again, Mrs. Intardy mentioned, we've talked about this quite a bit, but you can see we were somewhat level going forward. We still were over that 2 percent mark, but that's, you know, the nature of health insurance, it doesn't always move, you know, on average. But you can see that the increases that occurred this year and size of that increase and then how that impacts our budget moving forward. Special education costs in the education fund, obviously there's another one that, you know, we and Mrs. Spinopoulos have, you know, has specific guidelines she has to follow as far as special ed costs go, and those costs don't always meet up with 2 percent insurance, she's got a totally different average for what the increase on special ed costs are, or should be, it's not 2 percent, I would guess.
4 percent.
Yeah, a year or so. You can see that those costs go up, and again, it depends on the students and the needs we're needing to serve our students. I broke out also the outplacement, because we've seen a sharp increase in that area as well, and I know that the department is doing everything they can to bring kids back into our school district, but those that we have to outplace, that we saw that market increase as well over the last couple of years and going into this budget year, and we're going to talk about that a little bit as I talk to the budget, some modifications to the upcoming budget. This is technology and it's kind of a little bit of a strange graph, because I think, you know, if you look back to the 2010, 11 year, our technology budget, you know, we, our actual spend was a little bit over a million dollars, and the board made a commitment to increase the amount we spent on technology going into the 11, 12 school year, nearly doubled. At this, I will also mention, this does not include the technology lease payoff that we used from the $14 million grant we received back, so this is, I didn't want to skew it even more than it somewhat is. But, you know, kind of illustrated a second line there to show where the 2 percent spending goes as far as our actual spend in that second year. Also, I should mention this, it's not inclusive of staffing, this is only stuff, this is the purchase services, supplies and capital spending technologies, does not include staffing. So looking forward, I want to talk a little bit about our five-year financial plan, those key assumptions that we use every year, every January, the Board of Education, we roll out our, and we had discussion in the finance committee about the timing of this and what we do. We look at those key assumptions of that, for that five-year plan in autumn, it was driven by CPI, staffing, anticipated state funding, you know, federal funding has been somewhat flat. But, you know, we look at those key assumptions as indicators for where we are going, and leading into some discussion about the budget reductions. We also have to take into account our negotiations. We are currently negotiating with a classified staff, our teacher's contract is up at the end of the next fiscal year, those two together account for about $90 million just in salary of our overall budget that we're going to be negotiating, so obviously those are key factors that are on the horizon. Again, health insurance is up there, claims are Affordable Care Act requirements that we're not, that we're subject to like a lot of other insurance plans. You know, state funding, the, and I mentioned this multiple times, the income tax sunset in January and where that's going to end up, and really, the driver is going to be the election. And if you didn't know, there's an election coming up, just turn on your TV and the commercials will come ad nauseam. But, you know, the election's probably going to play a big factor in that as well, and where we end up with the governor and that election, so. And then finally, the pensions, while it's not at the Supreme Court level yet, I anticipate getting there. Recent action taken in the Supreme Court on retirees, healthcare seemed to indicate very strongly that the pension legislation that was approved may in some part are all be thrown out because of the constitutionality of it. I think the next, again, the cost shift issue is not a matter of if, I think it's a matter of when, there's no constitutional issue there per se. So these are all items that, you know, again, that, you know, along with those assumptions, and I breezed over them quickly, but, you know, these are all the things that the district takes into consideration, staff takes into consideration when we're looking at our budget moving forward for the next fiscal year and then even four years beyond. And in fact, it'd be hard to anticipate when you get much past a year or two, the way things change, but these are all, again, items that we're obviously taking careful note of. I want to go back again to January, this is the document that the Board of Education looked at. This is the document that the Board of Education looked at and was the driver for FY15. If you look at, if you look at that number right there, there's a million three that, you know, the district heading into the budget was concerned about, that we knew we had to do reductions to the budget to try and bring it more in the line with, and be in balance. You know, again, if you looked at, if you backed it up a year, we had this discussion in the Finance Committee as well, the picture, you know, from FY15 looked better, and what, you know, why, what caused us from going from a small positive to a deficit? Really, it was driven by the fact that the CPI came in lower than our assumption. Again, that's one of our key assumptions. If you recall, we were using a 2.5 at the time, it came in at 1.5. So that, right away, you know, drops a million three right off the top of our, one of our key assumptions. So, you know, again, we, the staff continues to retract that CPI throughout the year and keep an eye on that, where that's going. When we get to the levy, we'll, we'll update you on where we think the CPI for '14 will end up. But again, that was the key driver for us as far as, you know, trying to make the cuts.
Right. And making the cuts was a really difficult process. If you look at how it wrote down over there, up on the screen, a lot of it came from staff reductions and salaries. That was across general ed, special ed, and affected all levels, elementary through high school. We also looked at a reduction in technology equipment and reduced our tech budget. Ironically, we just spent quite a bit of time talking about how do we find more money to do devices, but with budget cuts, there are so many fixed expenses within the district that you have to look at things that are not an ongoing expense every single year, and technology was one of them. Professional development, my budget for that took quite a bit of a hit, $160,000 taken out of that fund to be able to do that. That greatly impacts ability to get out there and do things with instruction and technology, Common Core, a lot of the things we've already talked about tonight. But the textbooks and materials, some of those were efficiencies that we were able to do. We have new equipment, and instead of purchasing some of the handwriting books that we have at the elementary level, we have the capability to do that in-house. Some other things that we were able to do with the, our training in Google Docs and that kind of thing, we had a program that we tracked professional development with that we purchased. We're now taking that responsibility on in-house, free of charge. So on some of these things, it was efficiencies, if you want to go to the next slide, but it is having an impact on the business that we do. When you think about Engage 200, one of the things that people talked about is they wanted the ability to differentiate instruction. Decreasing professional development and increasing the ratio from student to staff doesn't help us get that done. Already talked about the professional development, and then it also did decrease our funds that are available to purchase those student and staff devices that we are talking about. So while we are maintaining what we are doing, we are not moving forward as fast as we would like to on improving instruction and getting where we want to be with that fit learning environment that I discussed during the tech portion of the presentations tonight. Thank you.
We'll move over now to the posted tentative budget and updates. Staff, we continue to monitor and review the overall budget and budget document, and we have some recommendations that we're going to ask the Board to make when we approve the budget. And looking at our actuals and where we came in and some of the other items relative to our spend, we have some items that we were going to update. On the revenue side, we were increasing our textbook fees based on our collection and the ability to collect, we believe to collect more funds with the new program, we're instituting with the recapture agreement with outside organization with, with collection rates. A refund prior year, we've already received some funding that we believe we can up that by $70,000. General State Aid, this is, this amount is basically a transfer back of General State Aid from Transportation Fund to the Education Fund. We recently completed the state transportation claim. Our special ed number is going to be a little bit higher reimbursement than we thought, so we're moving General State Aid back, a portion of the General State that we have in trans back to the Ed Fund. I wish I could, I still have a hard time putting General State Aid in Transportation Fund, but we are leaving $150,000 in there and moving $150,000 back to the Ed Fund. We also have seen better return on Medicaid. I know that's Dr. Penoplis's hard work in her department, and Medicaid reimbursement. We also have a step grant that increased, so all of these increases are on the revenue side of the Ed Fund. On the expenditure side, administrative salaries and hiring is completed. We had a few new, a few positions actually in-house staff that have changed categories, so we've changed that amount. Extra duty, the Board of Education approved tonight, moving, hiring OED or patents to do the trainer services, so we're taking the money out of, it was a spend in extra duty, and moving it to contractual services. We talked about, you asked a question, we're moving the purchase service, some purchase service budget from our technology budget, $75,000 over supplies for those purchases. And then the big one, which is the special ed outplacement, and I mentioned this when we posted the budget, that we were looking closely at that number, and I think as far as what we know today, and students that we're outplacing, I think we're over 100 now, again. And so we are bumping up the budget for that line item by $665,000. And that's somewhat consistent with where we, what we saw last year as far as an increase, so we're increasing that line item by that amount. On the O&amp;M side, we're increasing the telephone. Again, looking at some actuals and talking with Rod about the telephone budget, we're increasing that by $130,000. And then we have an employee benefit line item that we added in for an employee who's leaving, has left the district. We have, in the Transportation Fund, as I mentioned, we're moving $150,000 in General State Aid back to the Ed Fund. That increase, and that is tied into the increase in state categorical funding for special ed transportation that we increased because our original estimate was a little lower than what we actually received. We're still waiting to find out on the regular ed categorical funding for Transportation Fund. Claims are actually due on Friday, and the state can't tell us what the exact proration is. They have to get all the school districts' claims in before they can tell us what the exact proration will be. Again, we used to get about $2 million in that. Now, I think we're down into $260,000 or $250,000 range. So that's what we have as a line item, hold the budget. We believe it's going to be pretty close to what we received for that, for that line item. So what does that all mean? An overall budget, you know, if you recall back to the posted budget, we had a lot, a little bit more breathing room. Now, the budget is pretty tight. We're still balanced, but with the changes that, that we put into place, we're pretty much on balance. This includes all funds, Ed, O&amp;M, trans, IMRF, and working cash, does not include the bond interest or capital funds, which are non-operating funds. So with the changes we're recommending, the budget is still balanced, but obviously, things are pretty tight. So with that, we'll turn it over to the question.
Hi, Juan. First off, thank you for putting together the newest tentative budget, and this does include the comparative to the actual for last year.
Correct.
Is this going to be posted on the website, or how do we post this? How would it be available?
Yeah, we can post it on the website.
That will answer the question that I think we heard earlier. Just to go back a couple of slides there, you talked about, what was the original tentative budget? Were we, did we have a budget surplus in there or something?
We had a surplus of about $407,000.
Okay, so, okay, then, so that's why those numbers that were up there a minute ago, that the additional revenues and the additional expenses were netted about $400,000. So that's why we went from 400 plus to now break even.
Correct, it was 420,000. I do want to mention too, that the recommendations that were on, that you saw here for the changes to the posted budget would be put in at the time of approval, they're not on the sheet you've got right now, it's just the actuals compared to the budget. We haven't updated those line items of the budget yet, in the budget you got today.
Any other questions? Now, this is supposed to be the discussion, so, let's see, everybody's kind of like worn out, it seems, but are there any, any other questions or topics? And can we have the lights on maybe? Sure. Thanks.
Yeah, I had prepared some comments for our discussion on the Engage 200 report, you know, but many of those comments are really appropriate here. And it's because when I reviewed the Engage 200 report, it focused on the issue of transparency. It's a constant refrain we hear from our community of that we're not being transparent enough, or being forthright enough, and that many of us on the board were kind of campaigning on the issue of transparency. And then when we get on the board, you learn, and we see what we're doing to be transparent, and good work of Erica and this staff. Yet I think Engage 200 set forth where we really need to focus on transparency, and I've seen that beginning tonight. Let me explain. With respect to the report on technology, you fashioned your report, and where Rod go, much of what you presented tonight was focused on meeting some of the points raised in the Engage 200 recommendations. And I think what we hear in the budget, you answered some of the questions I had asked about where did the 1.2 million come from, in what areas, and what did it impact, and how did it impact the goals set by the facilitated team in the Engage 200 report? And I think that's something we need to keep in the back of our minds on almost everything we discuss in the report. How does it fit in? Even if we don't adopt many of the recommendations, or any of the recommendations of the facilitated team, I hope that we adopt all of them, even if we don't, that report gives us an idea of what the community wants to hear from us, what it wants comparative information of, how are we making progress on these issues of different education, professional development, on our extracurricular activities, co-curricular activities, EOL programs, certainly on the facilities report. And I'm glad to see that beginning tonight, not beginning, but perhaps lasting tonight. And it's something I hope we can keep at the forefront of what we're thinking as we proceed, and Dr. Schuler comes on board and really address what we're going to do with the facilitated team report and the recommendations that he's giving. So I just wanted to say I appreciate what you've done, Bill, here in your presentation, your presentation on the revisions to the budget, and your presentation, and our presentation on technology. I think it's starting to address what we saw from you, we point out, you know, the goals and interests and celebrations and challenges during the whole Engage process. So I'll make those comments now, and I certainly will not, we'll let the people in the faculty reach in with the discussion.
One other follow-up in light of what Jim was just talking about, the, you know, Mrs. Swanson and I are, make up the Finance Committee, and, you know, tonight, we don't have a lot of questions, and that's because we ask a lot of questions in that committee. And I thank Mr. Farley for presenting some of these in a graphic sense tonight that make it much more understandable for, you know, the non-accountants in the world. And, you know, I think it gives, it shows the trend line that we have and the challenges we have. And those challenges, I think, you know, the expense side's pretty much a given. You know, we have decisions to make on technology costs and things like that. The revenue side is the unknown. We don't know where we're going to be with state revenue. You know, tax rate is limited right now, it's increasing by, you know, cost of living, which covers maybe 70% of the costs. Federal programs are declining, the cost of special education is increasing. So, you know, we as a board, or we as a state, in the educational program we deliver in that level is really, is really being challenged. And, you know, this is one of the, you know, we're, this is one we're not alone in, for sure, and, you know, will be, will need to be addressed. You know, we're, we're hitting all those items, we, some districts may have more money than we have, but this is where the trend of education in Illinois is going. So, you know, we're, we're up front on this one. So, and again, you know, I think, again, this is such a, we really do focus and grill down on these, we talked extensively about the staff reductions and the other costs. So, you know, again, I'm not trying to make it like we don't have any questions tonight, because we've asked a lot of those. By the way, the Finance Committees are public meetings, so, you know, anyone that's ever interested or posted on the website and so on, so, you know, if you really want to be entertained, you know.
And I did want to give kudos to the Finance Committee, because we spent a lot of time talking about how to take this monstrous thing of a budget with all these changing variables and parts to make it more meaningful and more transparent during this presentation. And you all were really, really helpful in helping us figure out which pieces of these, in Bill's world, the budget is so complicated, I talked about Common Core, and I could talk about it 24/7, but putting it down into manageable slides and meaningful information, the Finance Committee really helped us out with that. So, thank you.
Yeah, just two things that I had, I had asked most of my questions after the last meeting by email to Dave. Two things that I just wanted to point out, I asked a question that if we assumed a flat, you know, no tax, don't absorb CPI, and what would the impact be if we didn't increase the tax levy by CPI? So, and over and above the $1.2 million cuts we just made, would be approximately 26 teachers across the district, which increases class size, has a direct impact on pretty much students at every school. And, you know, we did a lot of that in 2008, before I was on board, I think it was 2009, so there's a major impact on some of the decisions we made to continue the route we're going. And the other question I asked was, you know, we hear a lot about pension costs, one of the things that you think that half our budget pays for pension, but actually, it's less than 3% of our overall budget to TRS and IMRF is a pretty small number overall compared to the $157,000 budget. So, kind of in perspective, it's not, and it's a big number, but it's not what you might think about, or if you read it in the newspaper, listen to people in the community. So, significant number, but it's not, it doesn't move the needle all that much, in my opinion. So, like I said, all my questions are answered, I'm, I've got everything covered on my end.
I just, I want to go back a little bit. When we approved the original technology budget, I'd asked Mr. Mack a very specific question on telephone costs. And I think the number here shows actuals in 2010 and 2011 of $635,000. And my question was, because we made an investment in 1,000 voice-over-internet protocol telephones to eliminate LAN lines in the district, and the response I got on what that impact would be on the telephone costs was, well, it's, it's kind of a moving number, but it's going to have, I don't know, maybe a third less cost, maybe a half, it just depends. And now here we are, fast forward, and now we're going to budget $800,000 in the 2014-2015 year. And I know there's been a lot of dynamics with the technology. I guess what I'd ask is, have we ever closed the loop, and, because I think we bought 1,000 voice-over-internet protocol phones, ones for basically every teacher, if I recall? And I'd be intrigued to find out the use of that device, and if it's not being used, I think we could then reduce some costs possibly on phone costs, or use those monies of technology. So I think you've got that number, but that was a big investment, close to a million dollars for those voice internet protocol handset devices that are on every desk. And I'm just hoping that, you know, I keep seeing the telephone costs go up, which is voice over internet and all the other situations. So I don't know if you've done that study, but if there's any way that those phones aren't being used, I think we disconnect them, maybe change the cost of our phone bill to ATT. So just an observation.
The, the actual cost for phone service has gone down. The increase in that telephone line item actually includes both internet service, our wire, our WAN connection, which was just upgraded to 10 gig at most sites, and 1 gig, internet, which was upgraded, the phone service, and the Sprint phone service, which is all, we've added more phone lines and all of that. I can break that down for you, what our old Centrex lines cost per phones, and what we pay for the eight PRIs we have, which I think right now are $3,200 a month. They're about $400 a piece for the actual. When we talk about phone service, before I was on board, that phone bill service was really just phone before I was on board, that phone bill service was really just phone bill service, so, the, the money's, it's still being spent, but it's being spent in a very different way, I guess is the way to say it, but I'll, I'll try to see if I can actually get that complete breakdown from a few years ago, and play with it as to what the actual phone bill service is.
So, are, are you saying then, Mr. Mack, that the 800,000 now includes more than what it, so it's, it's not only voice services, it's voice plus internet plus a bunch of other things, because I'm trying to kind of make sense of, not only the question, but, you know, your answer, clarify.
Back when the bill was for AT&amp;T, and I don't remember what it was in my first year, our internet service was 30 meg, we are now at a gig internet, we've upgraded five times, that's still in that, that going from 30 meg to that is also included in that line item of telephone service, because it is paid through AT&amp;T, the Centrex systems all turn to eight PRI's, which are an average $400 a piece, which occupy 23 phone lines each, so we have eight PRI's, each with 23 phone lines, I can't do eight times 23 that fast, we're only paying for 180, so phone lines, even though we have access to 2,000 phone extensions, and, and different individual email systems and things like that, also the WAN upgrade is another thing that has, that we've got off the OptiMan onto the new ASE network, all of those do cost, they, there are savings built in, but, the actual costs of phone service before that, I want to, I want to say that number was 450 or something when I got here, I don't really remember what it was years ago.
How long ago was that?
That's five years. It was a while, I just, I, I'll get the, I'll get the breakdown of what the actual phone service is and how they're spent, but we also have more than doubled or tripled our wireless carrier servers, five years ago, data plans were not a big thing on cellphones, we used BlackBerrys and didn't pay, now everybody's on actual, we have data plans on all cellphones, so, but all of that is still part of that telephone line item, so I'll, I'll get a breakdown for you for that.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
You know, for me, I, I think the most helpful thing, I, I love this presentation, and I thought the most helpful thing is to put it in context between historically, how did we do last year, how, how does the future look for us, and, you know, kind of getting back, there certainly can be individual items that could be investigated, and our staff continues to try to find ways to reduce individual items, but you still have to go back to the big picture, which are those first few slides, and you see, if you look at those actuals from 2010 onwards, almost always were relatively flat, and to be flat over five years, when, you know, there's a 2% increase per year in CPI, you're, you're doing pretty well, and then you notice that where we do go over is very targeted, it's, it's the healthcare, which everybody is experiencing in their lives, and special education, which is something very unique to the education business, but we wouldn't want to do any less for, for those students, so, not to say that that doesn't eliminate the need for reductions and hard choices, it does, but I do think, you know, there's a difference between a budget that goes up and overspends because you just do it everywhere, and just because you can, and a budget that has specific items that are problematic to you, that as Mr. Farley has said, you don't always have that much control over, and I just think that's a good thing to keep in mind from the public perspective and our perspective, not that we can't, still don't have to deal with it, but when it comes to are we being good stewards, I think it's hard to say that our staff has not stewarded that money as well as, as can be done, so, you know, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
I do have a, a question for board members, because the next meeting, we will take a vote on this budget, so, if, i- is there anything that would cause you not to be able to accept the budget, is there anything in here that would cause you to say, you know, we're doing something wrong, I can't deal with that, I can't deal with that number, you know, is there, is there a deal breaker in this budget for, for you?
Can we kind of go around the room, or?
I have seen nothing in the budget presentation that makes a deal breaker to me that I can support what I've seen.
I echo Jim's comments, lots of explanation, lots of conversation, lots of good questions and answers, came back to all of us individually, so, I'm comfortable the way it's presented.
I agree, and this presentation right here, I, you know, could see it visually, and then, there was Rosemary, I mean, I, I don't know what else you can do, it's, and we're back on budget, so, yeah.
So, staff has done all they can do, Mr. Mack?
My only comment would be, I just got this revised one tonight, and I, you know, with the comparative to the last year, so, you know, it's my nature, I'm going to look at it a little further, but I don't, I don't expect, you know, it's consistent with what we talked about and so on, so I would say at this point, I'm ready to go.
Same with me, he's mentioned the finance committee meetings, and, and he's right, I mean, the whole revenue thing can change the picture, I mean, a budget is a plan, it's not, it's not, you know, fate, it's not, it's not, you know, locked in, but, it's, it's the best plan, I think, that we can come up with at this point.
The only comment I'd make, I mean, I'll, I'll support it, because I've done a great job getting it balanced and making some tough choices, so I applaud that, I guess going forward, I'm going to be repeating myself again, but, clearly we all recognize that from a building standpoint, we've got millions and millions of dollars of needs and, and situations, and we continue to, and I know they're trade-offs, so I get that, but we continue to earmark very few dollars in the budget for those types of activities, and then hence we end up, you know, doing a $10 million referendum, or, or not a referendum, but a, a cash bond, or things of that nature, but I just think we should be a little more mindful and maybe focus on that line item as we go forward, to start maybe building some of those funds in that, in that line item, so when we do have these building maintenance issues, we've got some money to help offset that, and, and so, you know, just, I know it's a trade-off, clearly, within the budget, but I think we just have to remain focused on that going forward, other than that, I think they've done a great job.
Just, just to elaborate on Jim's comment, in the facilitating team's report on facilities, they do focus on that, and I think it's incumbent upon us if we adopt that recommendation from the facilitating team to come up with a master facilities plan, and I know Brad here has been chomping at the bit to, to get after, so, I think that's something that will address the concern you raised, Jim.
Thank you.
Well, I, I will support adopting this budget, I think you guys have done a, a fine job in putting it all together, laying it out, identifying the impact on our students, I, I think, you know, for, I just have really one question, Mrs. Dahlquist mentioned that we have had to increase by four sections, I think, so far, so we've had to hire four teachers, is that reflected in this budget?
The money for those, every time we're hiring an elementary teacher, that's taking out of my professional development money, so when I say I have made those cuts, that is the money that was earmarked toward, we always have growth in August for the elementary levels, so, we're, we're cutting into that, we're not totally that, that all is gone, but I anticipate within the next week, so as we're hiring those teachers, that's not an additional burden on the budget, that was already incorporated in my professional development cuts.
Okay, thank you. All right, if, if there are no other questions, or in the meantime, if you do have questions after your review, Mr. Matheson, if you have some questions, if you could get into staff before our vote, so that we have, we all have time to kind of absorb, absorb those answers, that would be great, and we'll go on from there. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the report from Engage 200, a discussion on that, and, Mr. Roman, Mr. Paulson, would you like to kind of get that started for us?
Well, let me give some background, Barbara and I meet Wednesday, typically before every school board meeting, you go over the agenda with the superintendent, and we did so with Faith, not prior to Wednesday, but Wednesday before that, we talked about whether we should keep Engage 200 report as a discussion item, I don't want to sound like a fanatic for the Engage 200 report, but I am, and I thought we should keep it as a discussion item, just to make sure that the public knows, at the forefront of all of our minds, I had prepared a presentation on it, which I shared during the budget discussion, so I'm not going to repeat that now, but I really think personally, that we can defer this discussion until Dr. Schuler's on board, and he's got a chance to sit down and talk about, and get some business insights on the record with respect to Engage 200 report, and a more meaningful discussion in September.
I agree with you. I've got just kind of four thoughts, moving forward, that I think get into our discussions with Dr. Schuler, get into discussions with board goals, get into our discussions about committees, I think it would be interesting, just for an idea out there, to create some kind of permanent community communications or engagement committee of the board, beyond the Engage 200 committee, I think there's value in that, I think, maybe incorporating those elements, and, you know, last year we created this integrated board and superintendent goals worksheet, I think somehow getting elements of the facilitating report into that worksheet could be beneficial, to show how, what our community has desired, and what the goals of the superintendent and board are could be, could be valuable, I think creating a report card that is shown on the website, you know, I, I look at a lot of school district websites, and a lot of them have created this transparency link, so you can go and, you know, go to the header and see transparency, all it is is the same stuff that's already on the website, but just see it all in one place, I think creating some kind of report card on our website, that easily people can click to and see how we're doing towards that would be valuable, and then a lot of the discussions about, this actually came up at one of the committee meetings, to create some kind of working document that summarizes all the financial and program decisions we've made over the last five years, and choices we made, might be valuable to begin to show to our community, so, those are my thoughts, lots of discussions in the future.
You know, and along those lines, one of the things that I even found frustrating, you know, in my last campaign, was I couldn't even find in one place just a list of accolades and accomplishments, you know, that the district, you know, had, had, had made, and I think we tend to lose sight of those things, and, and so to have a running list of, you know, the things we've done, and how they pertain to Engage 200 recommendations, I think is really critical, however, I will also say that we are, just in a superintendent search, transparency, we are a whole lot more transparent than many districts surrounding us, I mean, you know, we, our superintendent's contract is out there, our administrator, everything is out there, you could find it, sometimes you have to dig, but you could find it, when I went out searching for information during that search, I could find very little from most districts, so, thank you to our, our person in charge of content for the web, I know you're not the web, are you, or are you the webmaster? Okay, thank you to our webmaster, communications specialist, for that, so, anyway, I think, you know, if, if we can, you know, one of the first steps we can take is just couch all of our decisions, and reflect them in terms of Engage 200 recommendations, so that we speak that language, we adopt that philosophy, and, and, and we can see how everything kind of links together, so, Mr. Paulson?
No, just one other, one other thought I had is, you know, Dr. Schuler has goals in his contract, and it's going to be natural, natural for us to try to link his goals to Engage 200, his are much more encompassing, so I think we need to be cautious that, you know, we, we try to keep those separate to a certain level, his, his goals are measurable, they're going to be judged every year, they're going to write a different things, and the goals of the objective of Engage 200 are more broad and subjective, so we, I think we need to be cautious.
Just, just one last thing, I, I think that as we're having Engage 200 discussions, we have to have it in the light of the discussion on the budget, otherwise we're acting like we have some sort of split personalities here, because we just had a discussion that clearly showed this year's budget, we're going to hold our own in terms of what we're providing to students, we're maybe making some adjustments around the edges that give a nod to the Engage 200 and what we want to accomplish there, but to really be able to move forward, we can't do it with the resources that we have, and so, that's just going to have to be a part of our future discussions on Engage 200 to make any real progress, in my opinion.
I echo that, Rosemary, I think we've got started tonight, we know what the recommendations are, we're not able to meet some of those recommendations, you know, it was explained tonight, because we just don't have them on, and, that's something that we're going to have to constantly monitor, and relate to the community.
I think as a follow-up for that, we've talked about this in the finance committee, and Mr. Gambiani referred to it tonight, in the building costs and so on, but I, I think that, you know, I think an ultimate goal, like we did tonight with the technology area, is we've kind of priced it, and I think we need to do that, and most or all of the engagement, when a price is appropriate, in the Engage 200 program, so that it's clear on the choices we have to make, and why we make them, you know, we, we talked about B-team sports over the last year, we talked about other things that we could not afford, and that's similar, that may evolve out of the Engage 200 as well, so I think we, you know, again, all those are hopefully doable, but not economically doable, so, I think we have to really be careful on, you know, on how we decide, and what, what drives our decisions, just as we did tonight on the one-on-one, et cetera, so.
Just along the same line, it's saying that we show as we reflect in Engage 200, we had that with our mission and vision, that we always wanted to refer back to our mission and vision, and we kind of got away from that, so we should, you know, keep those in mind.
As well, and, you know, and those things are meant to be fluid, too, I don't know if those need to change as a result of Engage 200, I, I'm not thinking that they need to, but, you know, again, when we set our goals, we typically review those and say, are they still meaningful, are, are they still fluid, so I, I think, I think we can make the links, but I think for the first year, going through this especially, we have to really be conscious to make the links, I think after a while it'll become part of us and become natural, but I think for now, you know, we'll have to consciously, you know, make that effort to, to do that, and, and the other thing is, you know, if, and I kind of have this question lingering in my mind when we had our budget discussion, but, if we are forced to take more cuts next year, how are we going to go through that process, and that's kind of one of the things I'm going to talk to Dr. Schuler about when he joins us, is, you know, how are we going to arrive at who, who, what gets cut, because I think if we have to go down deeper, we don't have enough professional development to keep taking it out of there, you know, we may end up with program cuts, we may end up, you know, with extracurricular cuts, we may end up, you know, in, in a whole bad scenario, so I, I think we're pretty bare bones now, we have these recommendations, and I think there are some things, like with communications, that we can do as a board to improve that, and, and, but I think, I think we're, I agree with Mr. Roman, Mrs. Swanson, pretty much all the heads I see nodding around the table, but without, without some inflexible resources, it'll be pretty difficult to adapt, adapt, yeah, so, anyway. Any, any other discussion? Okay, all right. Okay, there are two written reports, monthly financial reports and our FOIA requests, are there any questions on those written reports from board members? Reports from board members, committee reports, the finance committee is?
Spoken.
Spoken?
Overspoken.
Overspoken? But good speaking, we had a good discussion tonight, thank you, and thank you for all your hard work on that, are there any other committee reports, other reports from board members? Okay, just so you know, the, the wait-and-prayer breakfast, we need to get back to Mary Lou about that. about that, and also the DuPage Division meeting, which is...
If you want me to register you, please let me know, because I'll do them all at once. You can go on and register for the dinner yourself, or I can do it, just please let me know, so I don't miss anybody.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other reports from board members?
The Prayer Breakfast soon, I need to...
Yeah, the Prayer Breakfast is coming up...
Next Wednesday.
This is the DuPage meeting, we have a former graduate of...
Yes, Bobby Asbadon, graduated from Wheat North.
He was the speaker, wasn't he, at the program a couple years ago when he graduated?
He actually gave the Harvard commencement address, and then he has come back and given inspirational talks to our, I believe, our staff as well as our student body. And he came back to our high schools and spoke to the students. So, he's quite impressive, quite impressive man. Anything else? Okay, topics for future discussion, obviously at the next meeting, approval of the 2014-15 budget. It'll be committee of the whole meeting on September 24th. Our next regular meeting is September 10th at 7:30 at Bauer School. Prior to the meeting, from 6 to 7, there will be a reception, a board-sponsored reception for the new superintendent, and all are invited. So, do we have any public comments on that agenda items? We do not. We do not have any need for closed session tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So...
Moved by Mr. Madison?
Signed.
Signed by Mr. Paulson, all in favor? Aye. Propose? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Mrs. Sanjana, I have a couple more questions. I want to tell you that, you're not done here. Cake, please, eat cake. Cake, eat cake.